For 15th. Create a safer for the students living on campus, the residents in the area, as well as the people coming to the campus for different events. Parking is a critical issue that we're dealing with all the time, and as you'll see in Mr. Holbert's presentation, we've taken that into consideration and looking at parking and how many spaces it will have that are be paved versus unpaved, as well as in the general region of the campus to increase the experience of going to a game as well as attending Northern State University. When we look at the factor of tailgating, it's a major concern because you want to get people in and out and get them settled to have the game day experience, and we want to make sure that we have the right crowd management procedures, and this proposal we have takes that into consideration. And the last thing is the student experience, just as we've been talking about consistently, everything that we're doing at Northern is to enhance the student experience. What we're doing is creating a campus where most of the facilities are on campus, the students have that student experience at Northern State University. It's attracting more and more students to apply and attend Northern. For example, this year, our residence hall applications are up 20%, and that's predominantly because we opened one residence hall last year, and we're opening up two at the end of July, we'll take ownership of those as well, and we'll fill those residence halls. So we're trying to create this contiguous student experience for an on-campus living and learning environment that also includes opportunities for recreation and participation as a fan for different events. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Holbert, who will talk about the particulars of the design and where we're going.
Counsel and Mr. Mayor, thank you for having me. I'm going to zoom through these pretty quickly. Feel free to stop me and ask any questions, but we're here today to talk about the, we're in the conceptual phase of an on-campus stadium at Northern State University, and we're talking about the conceptual phase right now and potentially vacating 15th Avenue between the Barnett Center and the current school for the blind, which would be the future site of an on-campus stadium. Why NSU is building the regional sports complex, it means everything. This is probably going to be the biggest deal for Northern in an awful long time, and the overall impact is more than just playing football. The overall impact, I'll identify a little bit as we go here, but it means everything. And I'm not being too, I don't think I'm overstating that too much at this time. It means recruiting better athletes. If you can bring them here and point out that they're not going to go to another school in the conference or the region, but you're going to bring the best athletes here, that's going to lead to better teams. And if you have better teams, better attendance, higher attendance means you're developing more alumni and community support, and that means you're also bringing in more money for the school and for the community. And more money, that means more opportunities. That's more classrooms, that's more buildings, and again, like I said, more students, and that allows for more programs and faculty. Recent article in Forbes Magazine noted that when college football team goes from mediocre to great, college applications rise by 18.7%. So while we're talking about football, you need to keep a bigger perspective, that this is really about the overall well-being of Northern. A stronger Northern State University means a stronger Aberdeen. I want to point out that in a 2016 study, Northern State generates 229 million of annual economic impact to South Dakota, predominantly in Aberdeen. 6,270 jobs because of Northern State University and some other statistics required there. Northern is a huge part of the engine that helps Aberdeen be successful, and this stadium is a huge part of what's going to make Northern State successful. Northern's been doing a lot of planning, you're seeing a lot of that come to fruition in the last few years, tons of projects going on on campus, tons of money being injected into the university. The goal is to be competitive in the region and be a frontrunner. So our goal is to improve the Barnett Center with, by vacating 15th Avenue, we can combine this new stadium and by connecting it to the Barnett Center, we can also get a two-for-one here and refurbish the Barnett Center, sharing amenities with this new stadium and the Barnett Center so that we can provide a lot more amenities and be a lot more convenient, and of course, we'll have the safety factor. But doing so gives us a lot more property on the site, which by vacating 15th, that's a bunch more buildable land, which allows for a lot more parking spaces. So there's a whole bunch of upsides to that. By pushing a stadium up to the edge of the Barnett Center, we can create a sort of an intimate environment, much like SDSU has with the S-Jack there, where they build around the ends of it. Well, we could do the same with this length that would be on the edge of the Barnett Center. We would block the prevailing winds. If you've been out to a Northern game, there can be 30 mile an hour winds, which makes punting and passing nearly impossible. Protecting the field from the north-northwest winds would be an awesome opportunity here, and also to create a bowl effect for that intimacy that it would really site nicely. And then we could put the softball field immediately to the south of that would be the, right now is our conceptual idea. We have a lot of ideas here, so this is a conceptual idea right here that you're seeing in front of you. So the Barnett Center, there would be a link area immediately to the south, that would be a lot of shared amenities, and then that link would have a bridge over a small easement area that would be where the current 15th Avenue is, and that would be a plaza just to the north of the end zone between this new structure. And there would be, again, we'd be able to run utilities, we would be working with the city departments to figure out how to adequately allow for any easements and any fire and police services that need to happen, we would work with them on that. This gives you an example of how this would lay out. You'll notice this, by moving the softball field over, shifting the field up, we open a very large area for some grass parking in the southwest corner. That's over 200 parking spaces right there. Those are large, oversized parking spaces as well. Gives you a little example there of how that could lay out. And again, that link that I just pointed out, that would be on the south side of the Barnett Center, this would be an opportunity to build things like locker rooms. These locker rooms could have the potential to be shared between numerous sports activities. So you're saving a lot of money because you can potentially share more amenities like locker rooms. You could be putting sports medicine, training, other programs in this facility and not having to be redundant by putting some things in the football building or in the Barnett Center. Coaches' offices, other offices. We would have team meeting rooms as well as academic classrooms, so you could also be making it convenient for all the students on campus to use this facility. Team lounge areas, recruiting, and I'm not talking about recruiting just for football. This would be a pretty great opportunity to bring in kids for other athletic sports, show them what an amazing facility. You know, they've done a good job improving the north side. We'd improve the south side, potentially the whole thing. This would be a way to make this a regional sports complex that would be kind of the preeminent facility in the region. Hospitality opportunities, if you've seen the S-Jack at Brookings, how they use the end zone there as an opportunity for decks. Maybe even we could do what they're doing at USD where they poke a hole in the side of the dome, look both ways. This might be an opportunity to poke into the Barnett Center and poke into the, and look over the stadium, so pretty exciting opportunities to explore there. Parking, like I said, we'd be adding an additional 200 parking spots. So by doing this, we really help alleviate the parking concerns. So if we were to have 6,000 people, we'd need approximately 2,000 spaces for a 1-4 ratio for vehicle. Within a 10-minute, basically within this whole 10-minute walking range, we would have 2,333 off-street parking spaces. Almost all of those are on, you know, the Northern. You can see on the north side of the Barnett Center, we would use the Barnett Center on the north side as another door gateway entry. All of that parking north to the J-FAC, west of the Barnett Center, that would all be able to be used real conveniently, as well as all of this parking that we're showing kind of southwest and west of here as well. So we would be able to offload all of that. Now, that doesn't take into account any of the on-street parking, and I know people are concerned about that, but there's thousands of on-street parking within, you know, probably 20-minute walk of this, too, and that's not counting that. So this really does handle that pretty nicely. Tailgating, you know, you're going to have thousands of people milling around. By closing that street off between the two, we eliminate the chance for a vehicle pedestrian conflict, and that's worth a lot on its own, the safety aspect of this. It will also be an awesome environment. I tell you, we just went and visited nine different stadiums, and what tailgating is becoming around the country is fabulous, and this is going to be a great cultural amenity to add to the community. Pushing the regional sports complex north, I'm kind of wrapping up here, creates a safer campus, saves land, allows for more parking, saves public knowledge on square foot of building cost. Like I said, we can share a lot of those amenities between the structures, not being redundant, provides for a four-season stadium, not a four-game stadium. This will be a year-round facility. Provides convenience, improves the Barnett Center amenities, playing environment as well, increases recruitment by highlighting top-tier facility. And you know what? It will increase the recruits here, but it will increase the recruitment for throughout the community, because if you have somebody you're coming to bring for another job, you're going to take them by all of the highlighting factors, and this will be one of them. This will be a premier facility. I just want to go through just a little bit here, and we'll work with Robin and the rest of the city on a lot of these with Brett and talk about that. Right now, what we're talking about is potentially vacating 15th. Remember that 15th stops at Dakota and it stops at Simmons Elementary. Right now, it's a neighborhood street. It's not a thoroughfare for, you know, traffic going through for everyone. Northern is a predominant user. Now, there are neighbors certainly that use it, I'm not denying that, but right now, you can see how this would move. You would just simply, traffic would most likely move all the way down Main Street, and we would just simply go around. It's a pretty short jog, so you can see a little bit here of how traffic would work. We would improve Harret Street as a part of this project. We would work with Robin and the city to determine how to make that improvement. We would be adding, obviously, hundreds, a couple hundred cars, pretty easily would be going down Harret Street or whatever that county is, so we would be curb and guttering, improving that. We wouldn't, you know, if we worked, if this worked out, we wouldn't have to improve 15th Avenue next summer after they do their utility improvement. That might be a possibility, but we'd have to work through that. So you get an idea of some of those improvements there. And Harret Street, we would be working with Helms to make sure, and the city to make sure that that was done appropriately and accurately, to make sure that's a through street. We would also have an access point through the parking lot, but Harret would take some of that traffic. But overall, you would move traffic around to the south and the north, and this is nothing new at Northern. This is a national trend about moving, driving lanes outside of campus for safety reasons and also for the student experience. You've done it twice at Northern already, and you see this at other campuses around the state. This is very typical. This is probably the last major road closure, and I, who knows, things could change, but this is the most obvious major road closure that would happen in the foreseeable future from my vantage point, again. So just what does a sports complex mean? As I said, you know, it's a stronger Northern State University, and it's a stronger Aberdeen, and I think the inconvenience will be measured in seconds, but the improvement will be measured in millions.
Thank you, Mr. Holbert. I just had a few concluding comments, and then I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor. If you look at this facility, we, it's called the Regional Sports Complex, and what we're talking about is this facility would be available for use Thursday, Friday night as well for high school teams to come play, drawing more people to come to Aberdeen and have an experience and hopefully spend resources and funds in Aberdeen. The campus master plan, you could look at it as just buildings and how we're creating facilities, but the facilities actually do things like drive enrollments, and as the enrollments go up, it has a great economic impact. So we're trying to do things that will achieve all those goals. Another thing that we could also look at in terms of this facility and drawing students to Northern State University, a part of the stadium will be dedicated for the NSU band, which is a big part of what we do as the game day experience. So those students, when they see this facility, would be more inclined to come to Northern State University because not only will they play indoors, but they get to play outdoors in a great facility. In terms of academic buildings, you know what we've done, the Johnson Fine Arts Center renovation, we're building the new science building. Those are increasing the number of people and the number of applications to Northern. The residence halls, you know, we're spending $30 million on residence halls, and they'll all be open this fall. Again, residence hall applications are up. When we look at all of the athletic facilities, it's another piece of the integrated model for higher education and that student experience. We'll get more recruits to campus, whether they're student athletes or students, and that increases the probability that we'll have a greater championship experience. We've seen that with the investments we've made in the Barnett Center and the tradition in basketball. We're talking about expanding this to football as well as women's softball and women's soccer. So there's several experiences that are going to be enhanced with everything that we're investing. And then we can also look at this and say, it's another draw to enhance the amount of scholarships. Although we're in a capital campaign, we continue to seek more scholarship resources. We spend over $2.4 million a year in student scholarships for all students, including student athletes. It's critical for us to do this and continue to grow these resources to help students afford college. So it's critical for us to look at all of these facets of the property that we have access to. This vacant quadrant of land in the southwest corner is going to be critical in future campus master plans. We're not sure what we're going to do with it, but this plan to move the stadium north and put the softball complex in the southeast gives us a green piece of space, which is very important for Northern, because we don't have many of those because we're bound within the city. Being in the city is an advantage for students to have access to shopping and resources, but it also means that we're place-bound in terms of housing and neighborhoods. So we didn't anticipate initially that this would be the model, but we hire architects, and they hire, and they work with engineers and construction managers, and they come up with plans. So we're respectfully coming to the city to ask for this consideration and of this plan. This plan is really something that we look at as a safety issue. It's the full experience of the students, and we realize that anytime you propose any changes like this, it creates challenges, but in this case, we feel that it's justified and that we'll have a greater experience of safety and for our student population. So with that, I just turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, well, this is a street issue, so let's start with Robin. Your thoughts?
Well, we did talk to the team regarding a lot of the issues that we perceive based on moving traffic away from the 15th Avenue corridor. We're currently doing some studies to see how much traffic we're currently getting during the non-school time. Obviously, when school's in session, that number changes a great deal. That is probably one thing that is difficult to mitigate. I think most of the other issues that were discussed with their team, I think they were able to address and come up with some mitigation process so that they have minimal impact. But the traffic is one that will have it hard to break at times. People that use that roadway will find it inconvenient for a period of time. Of course, they will find it different routes and things will happen, but we'll be shifting that traffic to other roadways, and those neighborhoods will notice the change. That's probably the biggest issue that we see from our standpoint.
Okay, there probably not many others here who were here when 14th Avenue was vacated. Any others remember that? At the time, there was an issue about the heavy traffic on 14th and what was going to happen to that, but as it turned out, almost all of the heavy traffic on 14th was Northern traffic. And the Northern students and people servicing Northern that went on 14th, right between the library and MJ, didn't like it at first, but they got used to it really quickly. And I think the same with this, is that whatever the traffic counts are on 15th, I would think the vast, vast majority of it is Northern traffic, because it doesn't really connect along 15th to any residences that would have to go on 15th to do anything other than deal with Northern or, you know, some of the, there are some apartment houses that can be reached. So just from experience, when 14th was closed, also the extension of Klein into campus behind the athletic department was closed, and there was a lot of screaming and hollering about the inconvenience of that, but it was inconvenience to people dealing with Northern, and if it's what Northern wants to do, that's, you know, you're sacrificing that of your own. I think this makes all the sense in the world, so.
Well, Tom and I are trying to decide who should talk first. It's a national trend to build spaces inside the campus that don't have traffic for safety. So your points on 14th and Klein are well-taken. This would just be the third piece of traffic that we would try to manage for a safe environment.
I was hoping after the counselors, if, in fact, they have questions after they're done with, there are questions that you would allow Brett to explain the next step within the street vacation process so everyone understands what will happen next.
The request for vacation was supposed to be on the Planning Commission agenda for tomorrow evening, talking with some people from Northern. We moved that back a month so they had an opportunity to speak to you, so you knew what the project was going to be and what they're going to be asking before it came to you as all of a sudden this vacation right away. So now you know in advance what it is. It will go before the Planning Commission next month, be in August, the third Tuesday of August, and that following Monday, it comes before the city council for their approval. So that approval will be in August.
Robin, is there additional cost for infrastructure moving if you vacate 15th or any other additional costs on Harret or anything like that that the city's going to have to bear?
At this point, the infrastructure is going to be replaced anyway, and that you will find in the budget process, that was already planned on being done up and through State Street next year. So it actually ties in very well with their project. There again, concerns that we want to make sure we're able to protect that utility corridor in harmony with their project. It wouldn't do us much good if we had pipe that had to be replaced underneath parts of their facility. That would be a bad planning.
So the changing wouldn't really affect the budget that was already going to be spent, or is there going to be additional costs?
No, it's not, no. Actually, the additional cost is, I don't think there would be any. At this point, the savings would be that we would not have to replace 15th Avenue as it is after we replace their utilities. Northern would be doing that as part of their process into a different type of hard escape.
That comes over to Harret Street also, so the, it would be Northern improving Harret Street or the city improving Harret?
The discussion that we've had at this point, and something we have done on other projects, would be if Northern puts in the curb and gutter to improve Harret Street, we would come in and pave it to finish it out. Right now, it does not have curb and gutter, so we would be able to improve it as a combined project.
Will this accompany some parking also on Harret, or will it be narrow enough to where it just take traffic and that's it?
It will be a full width corridor when it's done.
So that includes?
That was part of their plating process, they were going to plat a full right of way instead of the half that we got there.
I think when we talked to him, there had been some discussion that parking was going to be limited on Harret, just to help the traffic flow in and out of the parking lot and around, at least during game time.
Okay.
What we thought, for example, traffic on what would be deemed to be the east side of the road would not be allowable, so there would be visibility for people trying to exit the parking after an event. So there'll have to be some plating process connected to it. But before you end the questions, I do want to thank Dr. Downs as well as Tom, come in on short notice, where I called them last week, they asked them to come in and speak to the council, and I appreciate you.
Absolutely.
Have questions to anyone else?
I have a little bit different point of view of 15th, because my son goes to school at Simmons Junior High, and I see how 15th is used twice a day by numerous families to get their kids to and from school. This will be a major disruption, not a minor one, not only for those families, but also for the numerous families around, because you're going to push all the traffic to 12th and 17th and Lincoln on roads that are not designed to handle that increase in traffic. Lincoln, right now, you have parking on both sides, which means at times, you're weaving back and forth as cars are moving each direction. That will be about one of the few accesses for your residence halls to get anywhere, except go to Harret Street and 17th. This is not, to me, this is, I don't support this, primarily because this road is valuable to the southern part of town, because there's only three roads right now that they can use to get from the southwest part of town to where they need to go to get their kids to and from school, as well as around. And this is going to be not a minor disruption, but a major disruption, especially for the pink pill on Lincoln and the people on, what is that street just over, that one-way?
Marshall.
Marshall, 17th, 12th, which is mostly Northern anyway. But this is not, you're going to make, like I say, there's a whole bunch of people in the south part of town that use this to get their kids from one location on the southwest because house schools are placed to other locations throughout the road or out the city, because there's only three right now. And Melgarde in the morning is just a disaster to get to. So like I say, this is not a minor, and this is not a predominantly Northern-used road, although it will be once your new student dorms open up, because you've shifted that to on your on-campus. Now, I appreciate the fact you want to have an on-campus feel, but there are numerous campuses that have roads through it, and like I say, there are ways that this can be worked around, but this will be a major disruption for thousands of people in the south part of town.
I was just wondering if you've had conversations with the elementary school at 14th and State? You know, I'm sure a lot of those parents are using 15th. Any discussions with them?
We've had some very preliminary conversations with the superintendent, and we have an appointment coming up in the very near future to talk about traffic flow for the short term and the long term. It's really up to the school district to decide how they would like flow to come in and out of May Overby School. Short term, there's going to be a school for the blind under construction, and we already have the Regional Science Education Center. That little corridor on State Street is going to be very busy, and I'd want to make sure that the students that attend May Overby are kept safe. So we would be asking for, at least in the short term, while this construction's going on, if there would be some consideration as to how to drop off students and where that drop-off point would be for everybody's safety, and whether the school district agrees to that or not, that would be their prerogative, and then whether that would be either a short term or a permanent solution, again, would be their prerogative.
Mark?
Thinking along the same lines.
I just want to refer back to when we changed the traffic flow on 8th Avenue Northeast, when it was a four-lane up there, and we turned it into a two-lane and with a turning lane. I had all kinds of opposition to that. People thought that traffic would be bundled up forever, and they wouldn't get to work on time, and they wouldn't get home in proper timing, and... And I I went to Robin and I said, hey, I've got a lot of opposition to this. And Robin said, well, this is this is the future. And and once we changed it, they got used to it. And they figured out different ways to get to work and come home and if they wanted to, or they could use the same route. So it's, like you said, it's a wave of the future because of safety purposes, and people will figure it out. Just let them figure it out.
You know, I I'm looking forward to seeing this process proceed. But what I see as as being advantages from this plan are frankly, the removal of one of the biggest complaints that I've heard. And the biggest complaint that I've had people come to me with is that they're afraid that when their football games, that people are going to be parking in their in front of their driveways, that they're going to be occupying all of the parking within within eight blocks. By adding this this additional parking space in the southwest corner of that area, you know, you're really solving a lot of that problem. I do, you know, I I think I agree with Clint. There are universities that have have streets right through campus. I I got my college degree in Vermillion, and we have Cherry Street, yeah, it's Cherry. No, no, we have some street going right through campus. And it is, you know, it is about every third year that somebody somebody gets gets hit by by a car. It's not a favorable situation. And I do like the I do like the improvement in safety that that this plan provides. That's what we need to 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 consider is is what can we do to to keep these students safe? So I'm looking forward to this process going forward, and I'm looking forward to what the is it the planning commission, Brett? I'm looking forward to to seeing what they have bring to us. Thank you for being here.
All right. I don't think we want to dismiss Clint's concerns or the concerns of people who might live in that area. But one thing that I always try to bear in mind when I hear people complaining about traffic in Aberdeen, our rush hours last 15 minutes in the morning and 15 minutes at 3:00. That's it. Otherwise, there are no traffic problems in Aberdeen. And I can see where people who are used to taking 15th, it would it would takes an adjustment for them to take 12th or or use Melgarde or whatever, and they might have to leave five minutes earlier. But we don't have traffic problems in Aberdeen that last that inconvenience anybody more than a minute or two. So again, we don't want to dismiss people's concerns, but we need to balance those with the potential benefits.
In terms of public safety, we've started the the conversation with the chief of police as well as the fire department to make sure that whatever we end up with, it it doesn't delimit the services that they provide to our city and our residents. So we're trying to look at this from all angles.
Okay. So Brett, if this proceeded along, when would it come back to us? A couple of months before it actually got on our agenda for approval or?
August.
In August?
Yeah, it'd be the fourth Monday in August.
Couple of months? Okay. Anything else, anyone? Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Next on our open forum, Mike Bakrani from the Development Corp. has asked to talk to us. Mike?
Appreciate your your time tonight. I have with me Rod Tobin, who is the legal counsel for the ADC. And we come before you tonight with a with a request that we've written out here, and I'll just read through this and then be available for your comments and questions. We're here to request in addition to the ordinance, which was passed last year, which has a really long number here, but it has to do with giving tax incentive rebates to companies relocating into our community. We're requesting that we add a new section that would give the city council the ability to waive the listed dollar threshold requirements on a case by case basis and declare a project eligible for a sales tax refund up to 100%. To be clear, we would we as the ADC would prefer the already established numbers in the ordinance be left as is and a new section be added, which would allow for the request to come before the council and request a waiver of up to the 100% on the case by case basis if the project follows and meets at least one of the following parameters, although I think it'd probably meet almost all of them. There are six different ones here. The first one would be to facilitate significant and comprehensive investment in new and or expanding facilities that will grow the tax base and provide a strong commitment to the community. The second one is to increase overall community wealth. The third would be to encourage diversification of the area economic base and add value to the area economic clusters and employment base. The fourth would be to generate additional sales tax revenue to support budgetary expenditures of the city. Fifth would be to provide long-term community benefits in return for the city's investment. And the final one would be to ensure that the recipient project constitutes reasonable development and further complies with all other applicable development principles and regulations. This amendment would further expand the tools we have to entice business recruitment, retention, and or expansion here in Aberdeen. We have come across this in many states which surround South Dakota that either do not charge sales tax on certain items. A perfect example is on equipment or can waive this charge up to 100% if they choose to. Furthermore, one of the communities we often find ourselves competing with in South Dakota has adopted policy which allows them to waive sales tax on this case by case basis. We would like to suggest that all calls the city may receive on this program be passed on to us at the ADC. We would love to know of anyone who is contemplating expansion plans and be able to assist them with either this program or one of the other many others that that are available. The ADC will screen all requests and only bring applications forward that are legitimate. We will consult with the city manager prior prior to bringing any request before the council.
Questions from the council? Go ahead.
You know, I don't have a question. I I would like to have have administration bring forward to us an ordinance, proposed ordinance that does just that. I think it's important that we have some flexibility to attract new businesses, to to allow existing businesses to expand. And I think this is a is a tool that the city needs in its toolbox to go forward.
Hey, looking at it, to me, it just makes sense, and it probably didn't make sense for us originally to put a number on it. You know, is one job that's part of a $3 million project worth more than a job that's a part of a $100 million project? No, they're, you know, they're all valuable and they're each individual job is valuable. So creating some kind of a contrived threshold, to me, really didn't make any sense, and each one should be judged on its own merits with big or small. So I would also, as Rob said, I would also support the council having the opportunity to take a look at an ordinance that does this and then have the opportunity to look at each specific proposal one at a time.
I guess I've never been opposed. Never been opposed to having ordinances brought to us and have its chance in court, so to speak. So like I say, I I still believe we should have some thresholds, but I'm not opposed to having us contemplate 100% instead of a 50%. So I think 50%, you know, we have the automatics kind of built in, but like I said, I'm not opposed to bringing the ordinance forward.
Question from you, Lynn, on?
We need all of us to say yes, since there's only six of us here.
Your request will work on an ordinance amendment that the council consider at a later date.
All right. Good. Glad to work with you, Mike. Okay. Back to our agenda, our consent calendar is items A through E of routine city business. Need a motion on those, please.
So moved.
Motion Remley, second by Ron. Any questions on any of them? All those in favor of approving, then then say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, motion carries. Under new business tonight, the first is, I gotta find here, the resolution comes from our city attorney to declare surplus property. Ron?
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, this is a routine type resolution. I think we've done this each of the past two years, so now going on third year where we're identifying a number of firearms that have gone through the process at the Aberdeen Police Department through our property evidence manager. And he has gotten clearance to to be able to dispose of these items, and we'd like to handle it according to the resolution.
Moved. Motion Luntzman and second by Remley have a two and a half pages of of items there. Cleaned house, chief.
Yeah. Property and Evidence Manager's done a good job, like goes back all the way, I think, 2006.
Okay, wow. Okay. Any questions on this request? If not, all go ahead.
You know, Ron, the way I'm reading this, though, this does not give, one of the things you said is we don't want to sell these at auction, and we don't necessarily want to destroy these. But as I read this, the only all we're permitting is that these be traded. Is that how you intended it?
That is the intent.
Perfect. Thank you. And that's how I read it, too. I just want to make sure that's.
Other questions? All in favor, then, of approving that resolution declaring those firearm surplus, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, motion carries.
I'm sorry, I just want to clarify, though, that the intention is to is to trade those that a dealer will accept. Some some may in a position where they just won't, so those will either be sold or destroyed.
Well, then, maybe that's what my question is. And so if there are some that can't be traded, I don't see that he has any authority to do anything else with them. I think he would have to come back to us. I'm not very interested in seeing these auctioned off either.
I don't think we've ever auctioned off any of the weapons. We've always traded them in or destroyed them.
Yeah, they do not get they do not get sold, other than through a dealer, through a trade. Yeah.
Well, I get that this already passed.
I'm sorry. I I understand the intent, and I think the vast majority of these, if not all of them, do get do get traded. I wasn't aware that any don't get traded.
There's some that would keep because of the keys forever, and there's some that we have destroyed in the past, but majority of them traded.
Okay. It's my position, though, that this that this resolution gives you one option. And if there's some other disposition that needs to be made, I don't see that you've got that authority. That would be my position.
This is just for this list, though, right? This is not for this is just the list that's been provided. I believe Dar didn't Dar go through these and determine that these are tradable and not because he usually destroys anything that can't be done. So I guess that's what's the assumption I had was that these were the only ones left that could be traded.
Perfect.
Okay.
I hope.
All right.
Maybe less than perfect.
Next item, this is the point of time for a hearing on application for a package off sale liquor license for ZBC Inc. doing business at 420 South Main. Presume there's no one here to oppose this. Entertain a motion to approve it.
Move.
Second.
Motion Remley, second by Rux. Any questions? All in favor of approving that application, then say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, motion carries. Item C, appointment of real property owners to appraise surplus real properties.
Again, Mayor, pursuant to state law, there's a procedure for appraising property. We have in the past done commercial appraisals. There's also a provision that allows the appointment of three real property owners within the city of Aberdeen. You'll note that we've got Troy McQuillan, Jeff Mitchell, and Marshall Lovren, and we're proposing them doing appraiser appraisals on the old library property and the current federal courthouse building property. There was an intention behind requesting these three because they Marshall has some familiarity with the federal building, and Troy has familiarity with the old library property, and wanted some people who have some base understanding and and some desire to see those properties appropriately appraised and and get those surplus property.
Moved.
Second.
Motion Ronay, second by Luntzman. Questions on what we're doing here or why?
Okay, how are they qualified now? They're not real estate agents.
They own real property within the city that under SDS, under the statute 6-13-2, if they own real property within the municipality, and then they're able and competent by that to express opinions of value.
They're not actually do the appraisals, though.
They can do an appraisal report. Now, it won't be the same kind that you would see with a standard commercial appraisal where they would do this, potentially do this analysis involving income models and comparable sales and stuff like that.
So they donate their services on this, or do we have to pay them?
I've told them it's without compensation, but that they would have the high honor of being appointed by this council to.
Okay, I'll go for that.
Other questions? All those in favor of those appointments, then say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, motion carries. We had two people join us late with you're here. Are you here for a specific item on the agenda?
No specific item.
Oh, okay. Hell, if you find something you want to talk about, let me know. Sometimes when people come in late and they don't have the opportunity to sign up for open forum, we we give them an opportunity. Item D, Cody is here with a number of requests from the airport. Cody?
Thank you, Mayor. The first item before you for the airport is seeking your approval for a wetland monitoring agreement. This agreement is for just this year as a requirement of our 404 permit from the Army Corps of Engineers for the wetlands that we created out at Willow Lake to offset those that we filled in on the airfield a couple of years back. We need to continue monitoring out there until the Corps has deemed that we have established proper wetlands out there. So this would be for this year's monitoring services.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion Rux and second by Olson. The anticipated fee range is from 3,000 to 4,500.
Correct.
Questions from anyone? If not all, those in favor of authorizing this agreement, say aye.
Aye.
And oppose no, motion carries. Number two, Cody.
The second item before you is contract for professional services for our airport master plan. I've discussed that at a couple of meetings previously. This plan, we initially had budgeted 400,000 for this. As you can see before you tonight, the fee that we're looking at is 486,957.68. There's a couple of items within the plan that drove the costs up a little bit higher than we initially anticipated. One is the standard for the aerial survey that's done as part of an airport master plan, an airport layout plan, shows you two-foot contours. If we did that on our airfield, we'd only have a couple of contours because of how flat it is. Therefore, we got FAA approval to go down to a one-foot contour to give us a little more information and provide us some valuable output from that portion of the project. The other piece that we incorporated and the FAA signed off on was including a strategic plan. We have a lot of different businesses, a lot of entities that operate at our airport and different users. This strategic plan would incorporate additional public meetings to gather their input on the future of the Aberdeen Regional Airport. So those are the two primary drivers. Also, to that, I want to note that this is a little bit higher. However, our initial estimates for our passenger boarding bridge, we had budgeted a little bit higher than what we assume those costs are going to be. So at the end of the day, we're coming out still at or below budget overall for the two projects.
Do we have a motion?
Moved.
Second.
Motion Ronay, second by Remley. The impact change on our budget is like $4,000 or $5,000, our share of this.
Yep.
Questions, anyone on this? All those in favor of signing that agreement, then say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, motion carries. Item three, Cody.
All right. The third item is the wildlife hazard assessment and mitigation. This is for the services conducted in June. This is a monthly observation that we have done with the FAA certified wildlife hazard biologist. I'm going to spit that out quicker when I come to you next month. But this is within the contract amount and and anticipated monthly cost for those services.
I moved a payment, $4,105.
Motion Remley are Ronay and second by Remley. Questions, anyone? Carl?
Council member Remley.
Aye.
Ronay.
Aye.
Luntzman.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Leveson.
Aye. Motion carries. Next.
All right, the fourth item, the services to acquire our passenger boarding bridge. That bill, the 3,222, or excuse me, $3,022.70. We continue progressing with Helms and with some of the manufacturers out there for passenger boarding bridges on our plans and specs development. and specs development. I'll bring you greater detail as we continue to move forward with that. What we're trying to do is maximize both the aircraft range that we can serve with the new boarding bridge, get longevity out of the boarding bridge. We're hoping for 20 to 25 years out of this new piece of equipment and then also setting us up for potential growth if we, in the future, through our master plan, show that we would need to grow and need a second boarding bridge, leaving room for that addition later on.
Motion to approve payment.
Tagged.
Motion Olson and second by Rux, approve the payment to Helms, $3,022. Questions on this? Carl?
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronan.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we go to Robin for a financial agreement with the Department of Transportation. Ron?
You've already taken care of a couple portions of this agreement. This particular portion of the agreement will upsize the footings so that banners can be installed on those particular light poles. It's something we've done. We don't know if we'll ever put banners on it, but we won't be able to if we don't upsize the footing to meet the DOT standards. So, that's what this is about.
Move.
Second.
Motion Remley, second by Rux. Any questions, anyone? All in favor of approving, then say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. And also, Robin, a bid recommendation on three truck chassis.
We took bids for these salt truck chassis. Salt trucks, in general, because of the material they're using or handling, there's a lot of corrosion to the brake systems, things like that, to the frame. These are in need of replacement. We typically buy used ones because new ones do not fare any better than the used ones do, just the environment they're in. So, we are bidding used ones. We only received bids from one company. They are slightly over budget, however, you know, that's, it's a real, it's a tough range to know exactly what you're going to get. And so, we feel they're within range of where they should be. They're going to be good trucks for us, we believe, and we have money in our budget to be able to cover the overage. So, we're recommending approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion Olson and second by Ronan. Questions, anyone? All in favor of approving that bid from Crawford Trucks, then say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. And change order and payment request, Robin?
We have a change order request in the amount of $217,703. So, that ruins my record for the year on negative change orders. And a pay request number two in the amount of $651,775 for the Eighth Avenue project. The majority of the change order, if you take a look, we widened out some of the concrete paving, we changed a little bit on the concrete overlay, what we're doing, and we reduced back a little bit of the asphalt shoulders that we were planning on doing. So, we've got a better pavement when we're all done, but it's at a little bit higher cost. So, we're asking approval of those two things. The project is open to traffic all the way through with some minor things with installing some sump lines, taking care of, there's a couple drainage problems off on the sides that we need to correct with maybe a valley gutter, things like that. But overall, we're real pleased with the project and the timing of it couldn't have been better, so.
Before he closes this conversation on this subject, would you please explain that there will be a fence along the path of the cannon lever top?
Yes.
Because I'm getting questions about that daily.
Yes. Okay. The bike path, of course, is along the golf course favoring, what is it, hole number two, out in the ditch line. For those that have a slice, they'll be putting balls out near that on occasion to protect, to protect the people that will be using that path. We're going to put up an eight-foot-high fence with a four-foot cannon lever that's going to kind of hang over the top of it. And that will protect our users of that pedestrian.
That'll revise the deer traffic. They'll have to go around.
It could, if a.
Do we have a motion on this?
Moved. Tagged.
Motion Rux and second by Remley. Robin, what does this do to you, an extra $200,000 as far as your plans and your?
We were well under budget to begin with, so it's still, we're still in good shape.
Okay. Questions?
What was the budget on that project, Robin?
I think we had 1.8, I believe, and this was a 1.5, so it's still, it's still going to be within.
Okay. Other questions? Carl, roll call for the payment, please.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronan.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye. Motion carries. And item H is a payment to Lean Transportation for mill and overlay work. Robin?
There were several components to this mill and overlay project. The first one that was completed was the water treatment plant service road that's on the north side of the property. That was completed. It's done and ready to go and we will be starting the next portions of the mill and overlay sometime later today or early tomorrow.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion Lunsman and second by Ronan. Any questions on this one? Carl?
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronan.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye. Motion carries. Bill presented for payment tonight. City Department, $696,607. Northern Electric Utilities, $4207. NVC Phone and Cable Services, $654. A fee to the United States Treasury, Form 720. Group insurance fee, $793. June Flex administrative fee to 121 Benefits, $273. The Ordway Electric Payment to Western Power, $10,290. Carbon dioxide for the water treatment plant to Proxair, $3,047. A payment to CH Diagnostic Consulting for work at the water treatment plant, $415. Lime at the water treatment plant to Graymont Capital, $20,172. South Dakota Department of Environment and Natural Resources, system charge, $50. Marco Copier charge at the airport, $91. AT&amp;T charges at the airport, $170. And Westlaw charges for the city attorney office, $541 to the West Payment Center.
Move to approve. Tagged.